Yes, thank you. I'm trying.
I'd like to call the Special Media and Raton City Commission to order. Can we have roll call please, Dez?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Present.
Here's the evidence that works. Do you want me to join me on a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank everybody for braving elements today, coming out this evening. Couple of announcements. All city offices will be closed Monday, January fifteenth, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Our next regular city commission meeting will be on... Okay, we're saying our regular city commission meeting on January ninth is canceled to allow elected officials to attend training, hence the meeting tonight. Notice of a potential quorum. Quorum of the Raton City Commission will attend the New Mexico Municipal Municipal Officials Leadership Institute Level One, January tenth and eleventh, 2024, and the Thirty-Fifth Annual Municipal Day, February seventh through eighth, in Asante Fe. Now, our next regular commission meeting. It will be Tuesday, January twenty-third, 2024, six p.m. here in the chambers. Next on the item, introduction of new employees, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have two new employees. However, one of them is missing tonight, but I'd like to introduce our new Director of Community and Economic Development, Ms. Melita Heine. Ms. Heine brings over twelve years' direct experience in municipal government, with a focus on community development in Texas and Illinois. She is a Certified Professional Community and Economic Developer through the Community Development Institute. She holds a bachelor's degree in Communication and Media Studies from Truman State University, a master's of Public Administration degree from the University of Texas at Tyler, and a Juris Doctorate degree from North Carolina Central University School of Law. Melita, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Excited to have you.
Can I make any statements?
Oh, no, I'm glad to be here. Thank you. Snowy welcome, and this is...
Let's take a picture. Let's take a picture. Welcome. We look forward to working with you. All right, item five, eight. Deliverate an Act on Reorganization of the City Commission. Sure, sure. Yeah, it wasn't on here, so...
Sorry.
That's all right, that's why I skipped it, sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Just on behalf of the Colfax County Commission and Commissioner What? Commissioner for District One in Colfax County, I just wanted to come and give my support to the Commission and the newly-elected Commissioner and re-elected Commissioner Teller Laurie. So I appreciate you all, and if we could ever be of any assistance, please let us know. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Si, thanks. Thanks.
My apologies.
That's all right. It's a long time before Christmas. All right. Back to item five, eight. Deliverate an Act on Reorganization of the City Commission. At this time, we would entertain nominations for the position of Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Neil Sagata for Mayor.
I'll second.
We don't need a second for nominations. But I appreciate the second. So we have a nomination of myself for Mayor. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, then I would ask for approval by the vote of aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, appreciate it. Next up, we have open for nomination the position of Mayor Pro Tim. There any nominations at this time?
I'm on Nate Laurie-Chatterley.
We have a nomination of Laurie Chatterley for Mayor Pro Tim. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I would then ask that Laurie Chatterley be named Mayor Pro Tim by the vote of aye? Aye?
Aye. Thank you for your...
In the opposition, I guess not? Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Move on to item B. Deliverate an Act on Appointment of Commission Members to City Boards. As is standard, the RPS and Water Boards. RPS, the mayor is part of that board, plus one commissioner. Right now, currently sitting on that board is Commissioner Don Jacomo. Commissioner, are you still...
Yes, I'm...
Interested in that, you would put your name in that? Is there any other interest in the RPS Board? All right, seeing no opposition, see myself and Don are on that board.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim is part of the Raton Water Bird, the Water Board. Currently, that would be now Ms. Chatterley, Commissioner Chatterley, Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley. And former Mayor Pro Tim, Lindy Schuster, is currently on that Water Board. Will like to stay on that board. Are there any other interests in that board? Hearing none, Lindy and Laurie will be on that board. Okay, next, we have the Financial Advisory Committee. That position was formerly held by Commissioner Chavez. Is anyone interested in being a part of the Financial Advisory Committee? Mr. Honeyfield. Anyone else? Commissioner Honeyfield.
When does that meet?
I believe they meet at lunch.
On like the third Thursday of the month, I want to say at noon.
Okay, Senior Citizens Board. Currently, that is Commissioner Chatter, or Pro Tim Chatterley. It's going to take a while to get used to that. Currently, she is on the Senior Citizens Board.
I would like to let that one go.
Okay.
There's a new one for me, so if anyone else would be interested?
Do we have anyone interested in the Senior Citizens Board?
Typically, it's a Tuesday at ten.
Yeah. Extraterritorial zoning authority. That is myself, and I believe that is by mandate. Me and Si are on that one, I believe. Okay, next, we have the North Central New Mexico Economic Development Board of Directors. Currently, Pro Tim Chatterley is on that.
I'd like to stay and I think Lindy is the alternate.
So would you like to do that? Next is the Library Board. Commissioner Jacomo, you've been serving on that.
I'd like to stay on that.
Would you like to stay there? Lodger's Tax Liaisons. It's not really a board, it's just we attend the meetings and take in information. Currently, it's myself and Lindy Schuster. I would like to opt out of that, myself. If we have anybody else interested in that? They meet on Wednesday afternoons, three o'clock.
The third Wednesday, three p.m.
We don't need to. We always had to, because it makes it easier for us to attend, so...
I would always be able to attend, but I don't mind.
Okay, right now, we'll just have Commissioner Schuster on that. Extraterritorial Zoning Commission Liaison. That is the city manager's slot, and I believe Mr. Mestes will fill that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe that is all the board, or if you have to do... Dez, I asked that you get a listing of the new spots and meeting times and that.
Of which new spots, I'm sorry?
The new list.
The new list.
Oh, I can do that, yes, sir.
And the times for all meetings.
I can do that.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving on, item C. Deliverate an Act on Approval of the December twelfth, 2023 Regular Meeting Minutes and the December nineteenth, 2023 Special Meeting Minutes. Should have had a chance to look at these in your packet.
Second?
Motion and a second to adopt the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, Report on Raton Fire Department Inspection. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, the Raton Fire Department was inspected by the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Each of you should have a copy of this report. I was out briefed by the inspectors on... Sorry, forgot the date that I was out briefed, but both members of the team and the state fire marshal came to outbrief me. There were total of zero deficiencies with the state, and there are some recommendations to hire more firefighters, but other than that, our fire department is in excellent shape.
Okay, thanks for the report. I realize now I've skipped an item in the agenda, we'll go back to it. But as far as the report, are there any questions for Mr. Mestes?
It's good to hear.
And now that we're doing a good job now.
Yep.
Okay, let's backtrack to item D and make this meeting official. Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2024-01, the Open Meetings Resolution. This is pretty standard procedure for the first meeting. Mr. Mestes?
Again, just like you said, sir, this is standard for the first meeting, and it just outlines the governing body's meeting requirements.
For those of you in the audience, it just outlines that we have to have seventy-two hours notice to try to attend meetings. Everything must be posted and such. Any comments or questions for Mr. Mestes?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-01, the Open Meetings Resolution.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-01. Any further discussion? Dez, can we have a roll call on that one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner...
Schuster.
Schuster, that's hard, I'm going to have to get used to it. Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Yes.
I know it, I just didn't want to come out.
Thank you. Item F, Deliverate an Act on Planning and Zoning Board Recommendations. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commissioner, as you know, we had a resignation from the Planning and Zoning Board, and we have one applicant to replace that member. It is Jason Bennett, a local businessman, and I believe he is well-known in the community and by the Commission.
Mr. Bennett's been to several meetings?
Yes.
Very active in the community?
Yeah. I think he's a good candidate. I will move to approve his resignation.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve Mr. Bennett as part of our Planning and Zoning Board. Any further discussions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Bennett is now on the Zoning Board. Item G, Deliverate an Act on Bridgers and Paxton Generator Assessment Reports. Okay, this is just a report, so there won't be any action? It doesn't come with a contract or anything, correct?
Correct, and just for the Commission's information, this was discussed at length between the city engineer, the Director of Public Works, and myself, and we think that this is not a wise investment at this time, so we recommend not going forward with this at this time.
Okay, this is...
This is for the generator for both this building and RPS.
We do have, you know, as Mr. Mestes tested this morning, we do have a temporary... We have a generator for the police department, and it does power up some of this office. It was funny this morning, I was hearing Mr. Mestes says luckily the power's still on, and in thirty seconds, I swear it was thirty seconds, the power went on.
Never knock on wood. Apparently, that doesn't work.
But this, yeah, this was, I believe this was like $564,000?
Well, yeah, but this part here was about $250,000, so... This is just the assessment.
Was this the assessment of like an older generator to see if it worked for City Hall, or what we would need? Because I'm, am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, and they're going to determine if that one is suitable, if we have to buy a new one, and so...
And we don't, we're not looking at that cost at this time?
Not at this time, no. The power's been out maybe half a dozen times in the last ten years, and we felt, based on the price and the number of times and the future of this building, that we should study other options to see if there are ways to rectify the situation.
Mr. Chatterley?
The one question I had, though, in the report, it noted that there's no main disconnect on this building.
Yes, that's a separate issue that we have to bring up, and so if there is an incident in this building, the fire department would have trouble shutting down the power. So that's a separate issue that we're looking at addressing, and that will probably come up either in the next commission meeting or the meeting thereafter. But yes, that is correct.
So that's going to be followed up by...
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments? And seeing as there wasn't really an agreement, we could just move on to the next one.
You don't want to make a motion? Just because, okay.
We could make a motion to just... I would anything a motion, maybe just to...
You want to accept the report, or you...
We can make a motion to accept the report.
The report, okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the report from Bridgers and Paxton Generator Assessment.
We have a motion and a second to accept the report. Would also stayed in there. Dez, no financial actions taken.
Okay.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mestes, thank you. Item H, Deliverate an Act on Addendum to the Raton Country Club Liquor License Leaks Agreement. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commissioner, the city of Raton has a governmental liquor license that is leased to Raton Country Club per the terms of our agreement entered into last year, January twenty-sixth, 2023. Through this arrangement, Raton Country Club staff are the exclusive servers for any event at the convention center that has alcohol. Mercy Swanson, Raton Country Club Board of Directors, has confirmed that the Raton Country Club mutually agrees to this extension. She further noted that her staff are ready to bartend the Cowboy Sweetheart Ball on February tenth.
I will move to approve the addendum to the lease agreement. There's one.
No, I'm... I got ahead of myself, go ahead. You're all right. We have a motion to approve.
A second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement. Any further questions? My questions are, there are no changes in compensation?
No, sir.
It looks the same.
Any other further questions, comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Deliverate an Act on Capital Appropriation Agreement Number 23-H2938 between the city of Raton and the Department of Finance and Administration for the Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition. Excuse me, Mr. Mestes, this is the $564,000.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. This is the grant that we received for the Bartlett Mesa Ranch. Excuse me, sorry, let me get back in. For the amount of $564,000. The appropriation reversion date is on June thirtieth, 2025, but this is to purchase the land for the city of Raton in Colfax County.
This is actually a capital outlay appropriation, and...
If I may. This closes the funding gap between all the money from the other entities, and so for capital outlay, we receive that. So this was that final funding gap piece that the city pledged to try to get, to help all the other entities with the final purchase of the Mesa Ranch, Bartlett Mesa Ranch.
And that ties into Sugar and Canyon State Park, which ties into...
Into Fishers Peak State Park.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Capital Appropriation Agreement Number 23-H2938 between the city of Raton and the Department of Finance Administration for the Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation agreement between the city of Raton and the Department of Finance and Administration, VFA. Is there any further discussion? Dez, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Thank you. Item J, Deliverate an Act on Lease Agreements between the city of Raton and Silver Spur Land and Cattle LLC for emergency services communications tower on Eagle Tail Mountain. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, the city of Raton has paid an annual lease to Silver Springs since 2003 in order to have emergency service communications at a tower located on Eagle Tail Mountain. The former lease agreement has been expired since October 2018, and the city and Silver Spur have just been operating a year-to-year rate of $600 per year. The new lease is one year with an automatic renewal clause for successive one-year terms. The lease amount would remain at 600 and then increase 10% every five years. The lease may also be terminated by either party for any reason with sixty-day notice.
And this is used in our communications with the water system and similar on that, as well as other emergency situations? Services, not situations. So I would entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the city of Raton and Silver Spur Land and Cattle LLC for emergency services communication tower on Eagle Tail Mountain.
A second? Motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the city of Raton and Silver Spur. Is there any further discussion? Again, Dez, can we have a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. Item K, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2024-02, Budget Adjustment Number Seven for year twenty-four. Mr. Mestes?
Oh, the budget adjustment, sorry. The report got out of order. Okay, the budget adjustment, where Michael N., who is unfortunately out sick, recommends to move available funds around to line items that are over budget. We're taking $1,250 out of the election. The election fee is no longer required by the Secretary of State for municipalities. We're also moving money between small tools and overtime dispatch and so forth. It's all pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move to approve Resolution 2024-2, FY24 Budget Adjustment Number Seven.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-02, Budget Adjustment Number Seven. Is there any further questions, comments?
I have one. On animal control, what's the safety incentive?
Police officers and animal control officers are given an annual safety incentive if they have no accidents or things like that on their job.
Well, it looks like a lot of these are safety incentives. I believe that's part of their contract that we negotiated. All right, any other questions, comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2024-03, Disposal of Surplus Property Snapper Mower. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commissioner, the recommendation is to prove that for an old lawnmower for disposal, it has been cannibalized, parted out over the years, and is no longer operable. The public works director said that it will be hauled to the transfer station metal scrap pile and then hauled off to the recycler.
And the reasoning we have to do this is because at one time it was declared an asset of the city, and you can't just throw things away. I recommend a motion, or entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2024-03, Disposal of Surplus Property Snapper Mower.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-03. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, Deliverate an Act on Resolution 2024-04, Declaring Surplus Property and Approving Government-to-Government Transfer of Property to the Pickers of Low. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commissioner, this has been an ongoing study, and we're looking at doing a transfer of owned lands by the city of Raton in the amount of 132.6 acres in the vicinity of I-25 and the 450 interchange. And I want to note that this transfer is conditional upon pending approval of the New Mexico Department of Finance Administration and the New Mexico State Board of Finance, and allowed under appropriate statutes.
So to kind of... I'll get with you just one second. To kind of touch on, this is, we've been in negotiations with the Pickers Tribe for almost three years now regarding a gaming facility. In the Raton, there is precedence for this except in Oklahoma. We are, have been in conversations with the Pickers Tribe, with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. We have gotten better blessings on it. This just now has to go to the Secretary of the Interior, this Dev Howland, and of course, our governor. So this is the first step in us showing good faith in allowing this. Unlike the city manager, Mestes, said this is not, by approving this resolution, does not give them the land right away. There are still hoops to go through, still to go through. So just wanted to make that clear. Anyone wishing to speak on this, Mr. Chatterley?
So the intention is to build a casino, correct?
Correct.
So I'm just curious to know, and I'm speaking on it as a citizen here. The, it's going to become tribal land. So there's going to be no gross receipts tax, there's going to be no, no nothing besides possibly employment. I just, I caution you guys, just I feel like this is already an economically depressed area. If they do come in here, it'd be nice, it'd be good to see investment, but there's going to be no investment into the community. And the economic, or the people here are already depressed, and I feel like they're just going to go, and it's going to become more depressed. And I feel like the Pickerega, because, I'm not saying it's them, I just, I think if you're going to run a casino, you're going to bring in your people. What's going to be left for the local population is going to be the housekeeping, the maintenance, the janitorial staff. Where locally now, we have a hard time fulfilling those obligations, period. So we're looking at giving a little over $1.3 million worth of land to a casino, to an Indian tribe. I don't necessarily see the benefit. It's prime land. I don't have another answer for the land, so I just wanted to... I don't have, I don't have another answer for the land, so I just wanted to come and state that. And I guess, what's the timeframe that they're going to build this back and the clawback's going to come back if it, I mean, if it's all approved?
We're still in a lot of negotiations with that, still talking with the parties involved. And along your, with your concerns, yeah, those are concerns to be said, but we're also looking at economic growth with the possibility of motels coming in, restaurants coming in in city property that we would gain a larger tax on and stuff like that. So we, I hear what you're saying. I completely understand, but those are some of the things that in our studies of it so far that we have seen as possibility of growth, especially with the Interstate 27 coming into that area, the possibility of a couple of hotels lining that access and that, so. I hear you.
Are they talking about doing a hotel or just a casino?
At this time, we just talked to them strictly about the casino. We haven't mentioned anything with them on that, although you know how word gets out there and we have had some inquiries about when is this going to happen from motel chains, so.
Yeah, no, it's, but thank you. I'm just fearful of, I'm always, from my generation, I speak, and I just speak on myself, I'm tired of hearing about racing. I've never experienced a racetrack and I think we're just jumping from one gambling thing to another.
Yeah.
And I understand that will catch people coming through and that would be the economic driver, but 132 acres is a decent amount of land to build a casino, motels, golf courses, whatever you want, and the casinos are going to drop their rates to nothing to keep people there. So they'll gamble, they'll just walk to their room instead of have to drive. But I digress. Thank you.
That's all right.
Thank you for hearing me out.
We appreciate your comments, always welcome. Anyone else?
Have a question?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor?
You need to really come up and state your name for record.
Okay. Now, I apologize, we, I haven't correctly introduced myself, my name's Luke Holden. We haven't, she, her name is still Heine, just one of those marital things. I'm from East Texas and Shreveport, Louisiana, big time gambling area. And he mentioned the hotels and I just, I just, I know y'all know about the hotel. Sometimes I have in-house hotel rooms, y'all know that? So I just make sure you check into that to make sure they're not going to try to just do that, you know what I mean? Because there's a lot of casinos, you just go straight from your, you know, gambling right to your room.
Sure.
And if they, you know, they want to commandeer that, you know, they have complete control of that, so. I mean, that's all I have. I don't gamble much. I've gone over there a few times and I don't smoke and they, they smoke lots, so just I'm out. But I wanted to bring it up, so.
Appreciate your comments.
Yep.
Always welcome. Well, I said, we're, just took a long ways ago on this. A lot of questions still have to be answered. I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is not a casino. This is not a casino, this is strictly a casino. Any other comments, questions?
Just in terms of the amount of property, that is a question I guess I hadn't really thought about, because we were just thinking of that particular parcel. Is it, is that amount of land something that we've nailed down with them?
We're still, you know, that's probably negotiable. You were involved in.
Yeah, I was trying to remember.
Last visit, I think that is still something that could be negotiated. If the commission prefers, we could postpone this resolution to the next meeting or something till we do some other discussions, but this is the amount that we have talked about before. It is the parcel that the old casino was on, going to be on, the old casino, so.
Mr. Mayor, we do plan on meeting with Pickers next month during the legislative session, so we might be able to get some more information by then if the commission decides to wait. I just wanted to throw that out, that we are planning on meeting with them, probably around the same time we're going to be at the municipal league gathering for the legislature, the.
Municipal. Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth, yes.
Can I say one more comment?
Sure.
I will just say that the Pickering is, I know of them from, from the old Hotel Santa Fe and some other hotels. So I mean, they do have a nice, they've always been good to their guests and they've treated people well and I just, just wanted to say that. So I feel like if they're in the hospitality business in Santa Fe, I feel like they would, they have that experience and it could extend up here, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so as this reads, as it's written right now, what we're doing though is basically telling them, if they do a casino, we will back, transfer 132.6 acres.
The way it's written right now, yes.
So if there was any reservation on that, we need to change that amount now versus.
We would, you change that now, that's why I'm suggesting maybe we postpone action on this until a future meeting.
Do that.
And you could discuss with them, you know, how much area they are anticipating needing.
Yeah, I like that idea or I like at least putting up to 132.6, you know, something either, or getting a better idea from them of what is actually needed for the casino.
Because, Mr. Mayor, you've talked to these folks prior. Had they given you any indication of what acreage?
We haven't really, we haven't really talked about acreage, to be honest, Commissioner. You know, we've just showed them a couple of locations, a couple of sites. They expressed that they were interested in this site, they thought it would fit what they envisioned, but as to exact amount of acres, I don't believe we've ever given them a specific number. This would be our show of good faith that we're, we are interested in working with them.
Because as the roadways have been laid out by New Mexico DOT, how hard is it to reduce that or is it even feasible?
What do you mean reduce?
Well, in other words, the way the roadways were laid out was based on molten hours projected needs. So if we shrunk it down, does that alter the way those roadways are laid out for entrance and exit out of that property?
I don't.
I guess I've never driven it, so I don't.
I don't think it would, Commissioner. I think if the main building was about where the tent was.
It would work out.
It would work out. In fact, when they were here, they had expressed an interest in using possibly some of the structures of the tent, but that has since now been removed, so.
Right.
After inspection, we found out it wasn't in the greatest shape, so.
Maybe that was a good thing.
Yeah.
And if my recollection is correct, there's more property over there, this was just, it was divided a little bit and this was one piece of that. And so that's probably where we got that number, just from that division.
Well, this was the amount that was going to go to the casino.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to alter that then as Mr. Chatterley suggested, up to, it would give the city option?
Absolutely, we could do that, we could, you know, we could definitely do that, yeah.
I mean, that way Dr. Mestes, when he, he could visit with these folks in timely manner to see, okay, are they serious?
Yeah.
Next step, process, that kind of thing, but.
Yeah, we could absolutely amend this resolution to, to include that wording, up to or not to exceed, you know?
Not to exceed.
Or we could postpone it until we get a good feeling and go from there.
I'm okay with that. I think it's, it would be nice to know how many acres they actually need.
Yeah.
Before we commit a number.
I mean, it's not that far off. We're chatting with them to find out what kind of acreage they think they might need.
Why don't we postpone? I would recommend then that a motion be made that we postpone this to the second meeting in February.
I will, I will need that you postpone resolution 2024-04 to the second meeting.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second, postpone resolution 2024-04 until the February 27th meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item N, City Manager Report.
Mayor and Commission, bottom line upfront, in preparation for the legislative session, the mayor, the director of public works, and I met up with Senator Campos in Las Vegas to discuss the capital outlay and other projects in the city. We're developing a summary sheet to get to him this week to follow up for our visit. I wanted to go over things specific with you, Mr. Mayor, before I send it to him to make sure that we're on the same line items. Several of us will be attending the legislative sessions during the session between January 12th and February 15th. The big rocks around the city with the treasurer, the audit team is finalizing its work and is reviewing samples from large projects. The police department is focusing on transition of communications to the new CAD. The fire department chief Burke will be in Wisconsin this week to inspect the new ladder truck. In public works, the department has been hard at work since midnight, working through the storm. In engineering, the commission chamber upgrade meetings with the project management company will start this week. Facilities, issues at the aquatic center have been resolved for now, we're keeping our fingers crossed. The clerk is still working on updating the city's website and as we all know, for economic development, our new economic development director starts Wednesday. With mentions and dispatches, I would like to talk about Raton Public Works, the Water Department and Public Service Department for working in this cold weather, keeping our streets clear and safe in these very dangerous conditions. And I would also like to give a shout out to Leonard Zamora for very clever problem-solving skills in the storm this morning. We had to unload an 800-pound crate at the convention center without a forklift and he came up with the solution. He has handled everything from cleaning roads to fixing boilers. And finally, my closing thoughts. Dave Berry of Miami Herald wrote in his annual New Year's article entitled, "Dave Berry's Review, Year in Review of 2023 Was the Air Artificial Intelligence and Pickleball Came for Humanity." It's a very good article, I recommend that you all read it. But what I want to talk briefly is how we cross into 2024. Many choose to embrace New Year's resolutions and I'm looking at a quote from Steven Spielberg for myself and for the city of Raton, that every single year, we're a different person and we're not the same person all of our lives and that goes for myself and that goes for the city. Thank you, sir.
Just going back up to the top, the list, do you have that, that you could share with the commissioner while we're talking? Basically, guys, it was, it was the ICIP list.
Right.
The top five stuff on it.
I can run to my office and grab it or it's.
Do you guys want to do that?
You don't have to right now, but I'd like to.
Yeah.
Send it out.
Send it out in a new.
So we can all see it.
Yeah, okay, I'll get the whole thing together, then I'm going to send to the commissioner.
And I'll give.
And then we can send it out to everybody?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Yeah, but basically if I remember right, it was all ICIP top five.
Yes.
Five, eight.
Actually, six, I think we're on.
All right, so thank you for the report. This time, we have reached the end of our agenda. I would ask any other comments, Commissioner Honeyfield? Nothing?
Well, thank you.
Welcome aboard, welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with you. Commissioner Jacamo. Mayor Protim Chatterley.
I want, I was thinking about how impressed I've been with the road clearing efforts and how much I appreciate that. So I want to echo what you said about public works, our utilities and our emergency services and for the couple of winter storms we have, I feel like everyone's doing a good job and there's been a lot better police presence out too as we have more officers, so I really appreciate that.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes, looking forward to the new year. I think, you know, we've got a lot of, we've got a few unfinished goals that we, we need to, you know, progress on. That film center, that film education center is very important, making, making this community a little more walkable and bikeable, I think is a big priority for us. I think we have plenty of works, but I think we need to pay attention to them, shape them up, get them, you know, a little more active. And so I appreciate the efforts of all of those who do that work and let's, you know, see some progress this year.
All righty, and it's for myself, I just want to officially, on behalf of the city of Raton, wish everybody a happy new year, looking forward to accomplishing great things, hope to see some of you colleagues down in Santa Fe this week at the Molly Trainee and that, and that's it. This meeting is adjourned.